Call the meeting to order and want to welcome everybody here today. I'm Steve Ayers from Lifeline Connect. Open with a prayer, please.
Lord, I just thank you for today. I thank you for your death on the cross. I thank you for the forgiveness that you give each and every one of us. Lord, I pray for our men and women that are here that serve our village. Lord, I pray that you give them guidance and direction and wisdom. Lord, we just thank you and we praise you in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Right, Steve. Roll call.
Here. Martin.
Here.
Clepper.
Here.
Bassett.
Here.
Barth.
Here.
Beverly.
Here.
You have before you the bills? No, council minutes for your approval. Any additions or corrections?
Making motion to approve the minutes as written.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Beverly.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Egley.
Yes.
Clepper.
Yes.
Okay, now we'll get to the bills. Approval of bills. Any questions? additions?
The villages share wood. What's the difference between the January collection fee and the January collections? Do they charge us to?
We collect the money for them and then I write a check to them and take our 5% out.
Okay. So another question I had.
Okay, do you have other questions?
Making motion to pay the bills?
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Clepper.
Yes.
Egley.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Barth.
Same.
Beverly.
Yes.
Next on the agenda is Amy Huffman from Palmer Energy. I think she had a handout she gave to everybody.
Yes, good evening. So I am Amy Hoffman from Palmer Energy for an energy consultant and we're in Toledo. Been doing this for over 30 years. And I'm in front of you because we have a partnership with the County Commissioners Association of Ohio and the Ohio Municipal League where they're energy consultant for any energy programs in their communities. So we've been working with Defiance County for probably 15 years, initially helping them with their electric, doing the RFP process. In Ohio, we're deregulated so you can shop the generation portion of your bill, which is like 40%. So for the county, we do that on their behalf for all the county buildings. And so we do that. We do not do their gas because they're Ohio gas and you can't shop in that area. But in the 88 counties, I think we're right now at 72 counties that we assist with counties' gas and electric when we can, or in Defiance's case, just their electric. But we also do electric aggregation, which is specifically what I was going to talk about today. There are now seven townships that we have assisted through the CCao in putting electric aggregation on the ballot. So it's available to residents and small businesses to have this option. Hicksville Township just put it on the November ballot and it passed. And now we're going through the process of getting them a price. Right now, we work with, for a number of years, Adams, Farmer, Highland, Noble, Richland, and Tiffin. And so what the pro- and so this is what I'm asking if you are interested in doing this on the November ballot. What the process is, is that it goes on the ballot and it's just a, do you want to have aggregation in your community? Yes or no? And if it passes, what the process is in that last page of information I gave you kind of goes through the steps. The first page is just information about Palmer and the program we offer. And let me say, the CCao and the OML programs are identical. It's just initially, we worked through counties and townships, although we had cities, we have cities and villages that were part of the program. But then in 2017, we became the OML partner, but it's the same identical program. But that, the last step is the process. And so the reason to do aggregation is to get a better price than the utility. Sometimes it's, you know, at any given time, because the market is fluid, it can be a significant difference or it can be a minimal difference. The other, almost more important reason to do it is that you have something for your residents when they get the calls, the solicitations, the phone calls. And some suppliers and growers are not as open about who they are. They can make it sound like the utility's calling and the utility is never going to call to ask you what you're paying on your utility bill or asking for your account number. But making sure they're in a good, solid program that is not just going to auto renew when it's over. We do the contracts and when they end, before they end, we do the renewal and so forth and always go through the process. So it passes on the ballot and then what happens is we do an RFP process. We work with multiple suppliers. We vet them. And in facility contracts, we have about 10 suppliers we work with. Not all those suppliers want to do aggregation. We're probably at about six right now. And we send it out and we bid it on your behalf. And when the pricing comes back, we come in front of the body and give the results and then the decision is made. Contracts usually last two to three years. And what will happen is if it passes and you move forward, once a supplier and price is identified, then an opt-out letter will go out from the winning supplier saying, your community is doing this. This is the fixed rate, which is typically what we do with aggregation. This is the supplier. And do nothing and you're in the program. And if you're not interested, you don't have to be in the program. And this only goes out to anyone that's eligible. So that means anyone that's directly with Toledo Edison or AEP. Not anyone that's already, you know, talked to someone and has their own contract, maybe went on the apples-to-apples website and is working with someone. So if they're in a contract that they, you know, they want to do, you want to do, then you won't, you won't get that opt-out letter. After the fact, you can join the aggregation if it's already in place. Anyone can join at any time and anyone can leave at any time. There's no early termination fees for any of the residents that are in it. So to give you an idea, in Defiance, the current contract ends December 2023. So that's what the six townships are currently in. Since Hicksville just passed it, we're just in the process now. But the other six have been through, I think, three contracts. And the rate is 0.0465. So on their bills, it's their, are you Toledo Edison or AEP or both?
AEP.
Okay, because there's, I have Toledo Edison, some of the townships. So if your AEP bill still comes, they still take care of downed wires or any issues you have. And then whichever supplier wins the bid, that supplier is on there with the fixed rate. In the case of these townships, that fixed rate and that's what they pay. We get paid by whichever supplier wins the bid, whichever supplier that wins the RFP. And our fee is for government aggregation, 0.00045 or 4.5 mini-mills per kilowatt hour. So that's how Palmer receives how we make a living. If you look at that for six, if you look at the AEP price to compare what the utility is right now, it's a better deal and we're in the winter month. And as you know, electric rates typically go up. So that's why we go with the fixed rate. And when it comes to residential and gov-ag, fixed means fixed. They can't pass through where, with commercial accounts, depending on the contract, that could happen. Let me think, what else? I go through things quickly. I have it all in front of you. You have time to make a decision because it's, if you do it, it'd be the November ballot. It's already too late to do the May ballot. It has to be in front of the, a resolution has to be passed and sent to the Board of Elections 90 days prior to the election. So I have, I think, five communities doing either gas aggravate, gas aggregation or electric on the May ballot and they had to have it there February 2nd. So, and the next step, so all of these townships, when they passed it, they ceded authority to the county, to the commissioners. And that's how we're having the great rates because it's bulk purchasing. The more you have, the better the rate can be. So Hicksville Township already gave me their ceding of authority and I would suspect you would want to do the same, so we just keep increasing. So with Hicksville Township, being that it just passed and we're still at the process, they can't, the supplier isn't going to just add a whole community in. The market is, is up, I'm sure you all know. Electric and gas rates have gone up relatively significantly from when I did this contract. But we're going to work it in a way that they will end December 2023. So the next contract, they will be part of that group. And that's what we do in every community. I went through it quickly, so let me know what questions you have.
So everyone's automatically enrolled if they don't fill out, not, or they don't opt out?
Right. So, but again, the only individuals getting the opt-out letter is if you're with, directly with AEP. If you're working with Mid-American, a supplier, and you have a contract in place, you won't receive that opt-out because people are not going to want us removing them from something they put themselves into. Because we don't know what rate, you know, you're paying. So if we're, if you're at the utility, you receive the opt-out letter. You have, will put your logo on it and so forth. It's very standard throughout suppliers on what, because it's, again, regulated through the PUCO. There's certain things that have to be on it.
You're saying put our letterhead, so the village would be in charge to take care of that?
No, I would do it. I'd get your letterhead.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
What about, is there a cost to put that on the ballot?
No, no cost. And, um, what was I saying?
Talking about opting out and...
Oh, yes, the timeline frame. So the letter goes and you opt out and you can opt out, but you have 21 days and that's going to be all on that letter. So 21-day opt-out period. If you don't opt out, then the utility, AEP, will send out a postcard or a letter saying, your supplier is going to change. If you don't want this, contact us. So there's two steps that, you know, someone will get the reminder. And then if nothing happens and they scrub the list, you know, they, they give us what is a list of eligible. And then we send that out, you know, that goes out and then it comes back. So the opt-out will only go to those eligible. It takes about a month because then you have seven days after the utility and then the program would start and it would show up on their bill. But the options of opting out, every supplier's a little different. In Energy Harbor's case, which is what the townships are in, you can go online and opt out, you can call and opt out, or you can send back the bottom of the opt-out.
Okay, I live in Hicksville Township.
Okay.
So I, and I'm with AEP, but I haven't, I don't remember seeing any letter coming yet.
No, it hasn't. Because the process is, it just passed in November. I met with them. You have to do, like, we do an informational meeting beforehand to invite the public to come in so I can pretty much do what I just did. And then after it passes for Ohio Code, you have to do two public hearings. We just did that a few weeks ago. No one attended, but that's typical. And then now that that happened and they ceded authority to the town, to the county, now we are pulling information to price it out. So you're still probably two months out, which is fine because we're coming up to summer. So the whole idea is to, you know, catch it before you get the higher electric rates.
So two months until we get the letter sent out?
After it passes, after we do the process, yeah.
I said it. Did you know anything about this since you live in the town? Is this the first time you even heard about this?
Yes.
Aggregate for the township?
Did you pass it, well, it was on the ballot.
It was on the ballot. I remember it being on the ballot.
Nothing was ever talked about?
And then it was in the newspaper. We had it posted in the newspaper twice.
Nobody knew what was on the ballot.
All right.
Yeah.
It was...
Well, we have nobody reading it.
So it was in the, it was in the newspaper. It was posted in the informational meeting that we held and then the public hearings, it had to be in the paper twice in, you know, two weeks and it was. But, you know, it's a public hearing. And then I don't know if the township has a Facebook page or did anything on it, but yeah.
I got a question.
Yes.
On the ballot, I remember voting for this. So that was township, but...
It, it was.
So...
So I mentioned this to Corey and this came up. I only was aware of it when I worked, talked with Stephanie and the township trustees. When they took it to the Board of Elections, the resolution was clear that it said for unincorporate, the township unincorporated.
So it was a mistake on the ballot?
Well, it was supposed to just be for the township.
They can't separate the ballot like that. They can't separate just township people when they went in for the general election in November. They couldn't say, are you from the township or are you from the village? They had to have it all in the same ballot. So it was kind of confusing. I had talked to the township about that.
So I think it passed by only two votes, so it wasn't much.
It's going to be extremely, there's a lot of elderly people in this town that are going to get those letters and just freak out because they think they're going to get their power shut off. Sounds pretty scary.
Do we need a certain percentage of people to opt in in order to qualify for the discount?
No.
And then we only see rates after it's voted in?
Well, they can't, we cannot, we can't send an RFP out until it's an official government aggregation.
But you can guarantee that it will be...
Based on usage. So once they figure out how many people opt in, they can figure out your rate.
Right. But, but keep in mind, so, and again, we have this in, I think, 27 counties. We do it in Henry, in Defi- Defiance. I have it in Williams. It's in Fulton. And, um, so... And, and keep in mind, so when you cede authority, I'm going to the county commissioners with the results. They sign the contract. I mean, if it's...
404.
And we compare it against what the utility is. And we're also a very conservative company. I mean, we have to...
I'm just the village, though.
Answer to the CCao and the OML. And we want to keep you as clients. So we're not going to recommend anything that doesn't make sense. The market is high and the pricing comes back high, we're going to say, you know what? We just, we just wait. I mean, it's passed. That's, the first step is passing it. Getting it into place with a price, we're only going to do if it makes sense.
Have there been many, or I guess if any, scenarios where the pricing has come back, all of your pricings come back higher than what the, what the actual provider is?
Besides the, what the utility is?
Yeah, so like...
Not on electric. It has happened to us on gas. And I can tell you in Toledo, and actually in a few areas, because the market has gone crazy in the last six months, we didn't move forward in some of the gas that passed last May and we've held off because it didn't make sense. And in Toledo, this goes back a while. I was there. So I want to say in 13 and 14, when we had the polar vortex and prices went crazy, we have a gas aggregation in Toledo and Lucas County and the, in the areas around it. We actually recommended for two years not to have a gas aggregation to stay with the utility. And it's just a matter of getting the word out. I mean, that's not easy to do, but we, we just did it through our community partners. So we just didn't do it and then...
So ultimately, so say it goes on the ballot, the village votes yes, we cede the authority to the commissioners.
Right.
The commissioners are going to get all of this pricing and...
Yes.
They still have the option to...
Absolutely.
So they still have the option to step away from aggregation if the utility provider's pricing is still better than what?
Absolutely.
So you're still shopping, but you're basically guaranteeing it's going to be the same or lower than what the utility is.
Yes.
Paying.
Yes. We're, we're going to show you everything.
Yeah.
And when I go to the commissioners, you know, anytime, I'm going to keep you in the loop. Like Corey or the ma- the mayor is going to know, hey, this is when I'm going to the commissioners, this is what the price, pricing is going to be. This is what we do everywhere.
Yeah.
So when the contract, when did it start? It started last May. So we reached out to all the townships and said, that's in it.
Yeah.
And just said, okay, the contract's up. This is what we're doing and we'll let you know.
And how do you, how do you guys handle the conversation with the residents? Are you sending mailers out or like what?
So it's different everywhere, so it's, it's just informational. We'll do an informational hearing. I don't know, do you send out water bills?
Yeah.
So a lot of times we do, I'll just do a quick insert explaining what, what is and then also putting the informational date. That's, that's done well. I remember when I was in, three years ago, four years ago, Village of Hamler and it passed in Henry County. That's what we did and I've done that since. Can't really do that in the townships, but the villages and cities work well. We're putting gas ag on for the city of Van Wert. They've been doing electric forever. Now they want to do gas. It's going to be the same, same scenario. And they've been doing electric, so I don't think they're going to understand, okay, well, gas ag is the same thing. But still, that was a long time ago that it passed.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I've been in aggregates before.
Yeah.
In central Ohio. Does AEP still show you what the rate is that it has to be cheaper than for...
Yeah, so just Toledo Edison.
Yeah.
And the utility bills on the left-hand side or...
Right-hand side, all right.
I haven't looked at it in a while, but I used to shop around.
Yep.
And the second question I had was, so you said there was no fee to leave?
Correct. If a resident wants to leave...
Is there a fee to re-enroll?
No.
Okay.
No.
Is there a limit on, you know, if there's people there?
You know, I don't know that, but I've never, I've been here 10 years doing this. That's never come up.
Okay.
So I, I don't think people come and go too often.
Yeah.
Is the county getting any kickback from this by taking care of all this?
So there's no kickback. Well, let me, let me show you, tell you how it works. So this is for the CCao program and the OML program. Of our fee, the 4.5 mini-mills, and this is what we do everywhere, we give back 30% no, we give 10% to CCao, OML. 20% goes back to the county, but the county, in the case in Defiance, keeps 10% and gives the community 10%. So you would get a check from Palmer, but don't get excited, it's small because our fee is small. But it, it's just per kilowatt. So it's, you know, in six months, you utilize 300,000 kilowatt, you know, whatever it is, then it's, it's that percentage. We don't do that for facilities, that's strictly for aggregation. Yeah.
If we went with the county, which we would, we would have to.
Well, you wouldn't have to. You can be your own aggregator, but it doesn't, it doesn't make sense.
Yeah. But if we do that, can, can the Defiance County go, well, you know, this isn't working for us, it's not coming out the way we want. We're going to opt out. What, what, where does that leave us?
So if that would happen, you can be your own aggregator, meaning, which is paperwork. So let's say the county wasn't an aggregator already. Let's say you were the very first community to do aggregation through us, through the OML, CCao. So it would pass and then you, I would give you the governance plan, which is all through the PUCO. You would fill out the paperwork and then we would file it. It's, it's at the PUCO for 30 days regardless. Then it comes back and then it's the same story as everything else. Every two years, you have to be recertified, which is paperwork, which we take care of. I get the commissioners to sign and we pay the $100 filing fee. Just so the aggregated is always certified. And that's the only difference. But since you have it, the larger it is, the better the rate.
So out of all the companies that are out there doing this, why, why were you guys chosen for Defiance?
Because we're, we were chosen by the CCao. We were vetted by the CCao and won the vetting back in the early 2000s. And so we have, you know, like 10-year contracts or so with the CCao. And then we were vetted in 2017 and the OML chose us again, or chose us. So obviously it helped that we had the CCao. We have a very strong relationship with them. We're a small company. We have 14 employees. We're very customer-driven and I'm always available to you. We do now have Valerie because we've become very busy. Valerie works Monday through Thursday, 9 to 3, and she takes all of my resident calls. So if a resident calls, it passes and they're like, well, I want to get on. You just, I'll get you, you will have Valerie's number. And there's always questions in the beginning and then it, it just runs. But we don't plan on not being with the CCao, but that's up to the owners of Palmer to keep this relationship going. And if for some reason Palmer was removed from it, another, your contract's not with Palmer. It's, the contract that's being signed is with the supplier that is chosen for the aggregation. The commissioner of the county has a contract with the CCao to participate, but that doesn't mean they have to work with Palmer.
And you guys get prices for all the different companies and all their different terms, right?
Yeah.
Three-year, four-year lease.
So we always do, right now, we're doing 12, 24, and 36 months. We don't, we don't go out past 36 months. The market is just too volatile. If you're going out that far, you are probably paying a premium that you don't need to pay. And I don't know what you're doing for the facilities, for the village. If you want me to look at those, I can. I don't know how many buildings or what you're, what you're doing. It, you know, it will probably make sense to go into the aggregation unless you have a water treatment or anything like that. But I can look at your bills and just say, yep, you're good, or when is this contract done? Because I'm thinking...
Okay, you still have a contract, aren't we? Sure.
Palmer's a privately held corporation, right?
Yes, yeah.
Any other questions?
Mark Price is the owner. He purchased it in 1994 from Mr. Palmer. And then we grew it by partnerships. So we started with the Grow, Mommy Valley Growers Association. We are their electric and gas partner. And then at that, about that same, right after that, we did the CCao. And then I was brought in 10 years ago. I worked at the Toledo Chamber of Commerce with their membership department and we started Chamber Energy Services with Palmer. So then we had the CES program. Since all of our clients are businesses, we work with businesses to save them money like we do with the county's facilities. So a good portion of our business is kind of government, private industry, and then the, and then the growers.
I have a quick question. I have a small business in town. I get a call about two or three times. I had three today.
Yeah, yeah.
From an energy supplier.
Yeah, that's not going to stop.
They are relentless.
Yes.
They have good rates, they got good programs, they got good marketing skills and everything. But with the current company we're with, we're at a four-year program.
Okay.
We can opt out by giving them, paying them a fee. You have no fees whatsoever, so anybody...
Not for the gov-ag.
Pardon me?
Not for the electric aggregation. Now, for the county, for the facilities, yes. There's early termination fees if they were to leave the contract. I don't have in front of me who, Defiance, they might be with. I don't have in front of me who defiance, they might be with Dynegy. I'm actually doing the counties right now. I was with them a few weeks ago and they have, um, 30 buildings, let's say 30 meters. And the contract that I will be putting them into, which they look at the supplier agreements, the prosecutor reviews. So law director would review, um, or solicitor. And there's always a fee. If, if there wasn't a fee for facilities, then again, a supplier would be putting a premium. Aggregation's different because we're always bringing in, we're always taking out, and they're all small users. So with, with the county, it's important when I'm working with them to say, okay, are any of these buildings, any of them that you know that's going to be sold? Any of the larger ones, are you doing any, um, retrofits? Anything that would help with your energy usage? So we look into all that before we price with any suppliers. So when we send out the RFP, is there anything that we could know? What we also do, we won't be able to do it for Hicksville Township, but when in December 2023, when defiance is out, we will RFP with multiple other gov eggs. So defiance county facilities that we just did, there were, I believe, eight to 10 county facility contracts in that RFP. We do it that way because I think we have 32 facilities that are up in May of 2021. So one supplier doesn't get the whole batch, but the suppliers, the 10 we sent it out to, they pull them apart. So there, I had defiance on there, I had Paulding, I had Putnam, um, and then my coworkers. I, I have 25 counties and I have two other coworkers that have the rest of the state. So they pulled again, pulled apart, they look at the load of that county. But because we cover such a load as the CCAO program, we get competitive pricing anyhow. And then our fee is low. Our facilities fee, which doesn't matter to you guys, but is one mil and point 001 for the government. And then again, it's 4.5 mini-mills for the egg.
I was asking also on a, on a residential basis, I mean, are we, I don't get phone calls at home to change it. We're AEP at home, but I don't get these companies calling me and, uh, murdering me at home for savings. I don't have any of you or you do.
I don't.
And you can opt out, I mean, this is a whole different program than anybody. But those residents though that have contracts currently and will not get your letter or get your advantage or your cost savings, they don't get to take advantage of that because they might already be tied in with another company.
Right, just till they end. And word gets out. I mean, it, it, these programs typically only grow because if they are doing something, they talk to whoever.
True.
Family, neighbors, coworkers, and, you know, not that it's a huge topic of discussion by any means, but if it comes up, oh yeah, I'm in the village's program and this is what I'm going to pay for the next two years. And then again, they would just call us and we would help them through. But we're also going to tell them, okay, you need to call the supplier you're with to make sure there's no early termination fees. And if there are, unless it's triple the rate, there's no reason, there's no reason to pay 150 or, or $50 to leave a program. But.
Everybody's, everybody's.
This is what's helped, yeah. This is what's helped is that because there's so many suppliers out there or brokers, a lot of them are brokers, and they're calling on the phone, they have a, they have a good price, but it could be for only six months. And then it goes to a, um, monthly variable rate. And again, not to keep talking about, um, Hamler, but I had a, uh, at my first informational meeting, a woman said, oh, I just got into something in so five, three, which at the time was a good number. And I said, okay, and so she was in that and then, um, I came back to do the public hearing and she came to the, there, I did two in one day and she goes, um, I don't think I'm being charged the same. And I said, well, do you want to come back and, oh yeah, I'll come back. And sure enough, she was paying, I think it was 14 cents. Well, no one should be paying 14 cents. So we called during the meeting and they said, oh no, that was just an introductory. And then we go to this variable rate, she was calling someone in Texas and, um, and said, well, she gets a rebate. They wouldn't tell her how much the rebate would be and, or tell me her, you know, I called on her behalf, but she was next to me. And, um, so she, she got her money back, but what this particular company did was it didn't, her price didn't really go up, but she noticed there was a line item that they were holding it. And there was 175 dollars in that, holding is not the right word, but they were, they were holding onto it. But then when she canceled, well, sure enough, they then charged her for it. They're going to charge her eventually. Maybe some of that rebate was going to come back from there, I don't know. But that's not going to stop the phone calls, but she now knows there's an aggregation program in her community. So.
It makes sense personally.
Do what?
Said it makes sense personally.
Okay, any other questions?
Obviously we don't have to make that decision tonight.
No, and if you, you know, need me to come back or I didn't put my business card in there, but you have my information. You can call me anytime with any other questions you might come up with. Or please don't hesitate to reach out to the commissioners or any of the townships if they've had any issue.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, notice of public hearing. Planning commission will hold a hearing February the 10th at 6:00 PM in the office of the zoning inspector to discuss a lot split at 119 East Smith Street. Boards and commissions, there's minutes about the nuisance board meeting. Ron, yeah, Ron, you were there. Mike, so any questions? Getting a lot of letters sent out.
A while back, there's a house on the list and I don't know whatever we got done with it, but on Rock Street between Smith and Hyde.
Do you want it burnt?
No, 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 on, on Rock Street, right along the train tracks there.
By the background?
No, no, on between High Street and Smith Street. Yeah, it used to be a one-way.
Oh, where the sidewalk was out for so long?
No, the, all the stuff out in the yard and all the junk and kind of like a field and.
Mm-hmm, it, uh, from back then, I'm not saying anything, nothing's happened in the last.
I don't remember either.
Four, five years. It's considered a garden and there's nothing you can do about it.
I did go talk to her about last summer. It was quite a meeting, but yeah, that's what she said.
And, and she has, she has legal backing on it.
So radar's on it.
Doesn't look good.
Okay, any other comments about the meeting? Quite a few.
Or, or does anybody know of anything that needs addressed that we have not? I wanted to thank several of you that spoke up.
Have we put any sort of, uh, I don't want to say teeth, but to any of these letters? Is that something that, how do, how do we make these letters more effective, I guess, would be the question?
I think he would be the one to answer that because there's only so much of a bite we can do.
I mean, the key on it, I think, is the letters and the follow-up and the trying to stay after people to get it done. But I mean, you're still, and I don't have it memorized off the top of my head, but you're still restricted by the nuisance code as to the type of things you can do. The other thing is, we've had this discussion a lot in here over the years is something that's unsightly isn't necessarily a nuisance. And so while some people don't choose to take as good a care of their property as say Ron or anybody else that's in here that, you know, takes pride in it or whatever, that doesn't make it a nuisance. I mean, it, other than the things that are specifically described as nuisances in the code, you know, having a couch on your porch or whatever like that, that your neighbors may think is terrible. That's not a nuisance, there's nothing that says you can't do that.
But you can have eight of them stacked together.
Right, something that's, or.
Say, don't we have ordinance against that actually, couches on front porches?
Um, I, I don't think one, I think it has to be multiples.
But anyway, so unless it somehow affects, it's usually things that affect public health. You know, a dangerous condition in a home or it might fall down if somebody walks in or somebody might get hurt or.
So in those scenarios, for instance, um, how do we go about getting them resolved? So if you have a sanitary issue or a structural issue, being as though we don't have a building inspector, how does the village go about rectifying this?
We have one through the health board.
I was going to say sanitary typically would involve the health department.
And, and.
If it was a sanitary issue. If it was a structural, there's a number of things, I think the fire chief has some. You, you have some pull with that, right? And with the state, like with the state or whatever, if there's a structural issue. No different than down here when the building half fell in the, in the street and making the call to tear it down or whatever, instead of waiting for somebody else to do it and things of that nature. But it's a combination of all those, you know, the health department, the state, fire chief, our, you know, zoning people. And, uh, it really is just a matter of trying to stay after the people. But some of the things you're limited in, like say, you guys could drive around town and unfortunately probably find all kinds of places like, oh, that, that doesn't look right. Kind of like the garden that they were talking about. But unless it somehow affects the public health or safety or is specific like noxious weeds and things like that, you know, that we know are specifically defined in the code, other than paying a visit to them and suggesting to them or making a general statement that, boy, it'd be nice if, you know, our community cleaned. Like we've talked about many times over the years, you know, to clean things up a little bit and get the neighborhoods looking nicer. I mean, unless it's really a health or safety issue, you're limited on the stuff you could do. If it is one of those things, then you can file the code section and you can send them the notice. And depending on how serious it is, it may require immediate action, like the tearing down of that building. If it's not, then the notice basically gives them a certain amount of time to remedy the situation. And if they don't, ultimately, there's a couple of things that can done, be done. If it's a safety issue, you basically can make it so that they can't enter the premises and nobody can go in. So if it's a house, then obviously it's not livable at that point until the problem's remedied. The other thing, you know, like you say, you can do is require them to make certain repairs. And again, that's always the hard part is because, you know, how do the people on our nuisance board and/or in conjunction with the fire chief who, I mean, no disrespect to anybody, aren't exactly building, like state building inspectors. So how do you go in there and tell them, hey, you got to do A, B, C, and D in order to make this place so it's livable? And until you do that, you know, you're not going to be allowed to occupy it. Obviously you got to get assistance from other organizations and, so if we had a building inspector, we would be able to do that though. We might have to change our code a little bit more and, and make it more specific about in this event, this, this, this. You know, make it, like to use your term, a little more teeth to it or at least a little more structure to it.
Yeah.
Um, and again, it just goes, it just depends on how far you want to take it.
I would like to add, I've got a email from, uh, Mike Bailey. Uh, I'm sure you got the same one today. Uh, that 300, uh, 300 on Chicago. That, that property owner has contacted Mike. Mike had offered different avenues that she could go through to repair the place, uh, refused everything. She's accepted now, she wants Mike to, to take her through the, the system and, and help her along. So we got, we got something happening there.
Good.
It all takes time.
Oh, yeah.
Letters and, so, any other questions about the nuisance board? Okay, uh, committee reports, ordinance committee met January 20th.
Um, just to kind of sum up what our meeting did, we met up on the background checks and what to do and how to handle the baseball association. Um, we agreed that the best direction is to require them to get liability insurance to cover any incidences that might occur on the property. Um, we discussed some different avenues and we were able to meet up. Taylor and Ron and ourselves were able to meet up and Troy even was able to join in via telephone and kind of lead us into a direction. So we feel at this time, that's the best direction to go.
So liability insurance over background check. Well, what if softball doesn't want to do the liability?
Well, right.
They want to do background check.
They have control over them anyways because they're not playing on our field, so.
Not yet, they, they want to play on the boys' fields at the start of the, at the start of the season when baseball hasn't started yet.
I would like to add that the one thing that we did talk about was if there's a lease in place to utilize village property, which there should be.
Should be.
Anybody that's, any, any organization or individual that wants to use, utilize the facility, we should require some sort of lease to be put in place and then also require liability insurance. I've talked with several different municipalities and that's how they all handle it. So Brian, for instance, they don't stipulate, they don't stipulate how these independent organizations have to operate. They just require the liability insurance to be, be in place.
At what, at what cost? One million, two million, did they say?
Uh, I believe Brian's policies are all one million.
One million is the thing I've seen the most.
It suggests one million.
They also, I believe the city of Brian requires a sexual molestation rider, so it's an additional rider.
I think I suggested that in the meeting that that, I don't know what that costs, but that is a specific type of policy that you can have.
And, and, correct me if I'm wrong here, Eric, but don't you, are you saying that, that the softball shouldn't have to do a lease with us?
No, I'm saying if softball's using our property too and they don't want to pay for the liability insurance. And they want to get background checks done because a lot of the tournaments they play in, they have to have background checks anyways. So why, they don't want to do both. They don't want to have to pay for background checks and for liability insurance. I don't even know what the cost of liability insurance is.
That's, that's the thing where, and I'm only speaking for myself, not the rest of the committee. I don't think you can pick and choose. You're going to have to have a blanket and that's what we do.
That's what we've been talking about was having it.
You can't say that, okay, uh, she's got a, a group of girls that's going to play and, but they're going to be all right. And he's got a group of guys that's going to play, we need to get a policy from them. And he's got a group of guys, we need background checks on it.
And policy.
And policy, yeah, yeah. It's got to be a blanket or it's not going to work, I don't think.
I think the scenario, go ahead, Tony.
Well, if they're going to be using those fields, I mean, that's no different than us holding an all-star tournament. There's going to be other teams who are going to be coming in and using those fields also.
Exactly.
But it's going to be the baseball association's ultimate responsibility to hold the liability for whoever uses that land that they're leasing from us.
My biggest thing though is it's not, I'm not worried about when there's hundreds of people there. It's the individual practices. I mean, my son's going to be a little league again this year and I would just feel a lot more comfortable if we did the background checks. Now, that's my personal opinion, but I think that that's best.
I would say though that you also run the risk of being more liable should something happen and we're the monitors of the background checks.
I would much rather them show their cars.
Yeah, I disagree with that.
Yeah, so do I. So, so you have, you have 10 coaches out there that we all know, which I know we don't, but let's just say everyone knows that they have bad records. But it's okay to put those people around kids, possibly individually, and don't give them a background check, but instead have the league buy an insurance policy covering their butt in case the person does something stupid again.
But that's also, we, we don't operate the league, that's the league's decision.
Well, I'm just saying it's our property, that was the whole.
It's, it's two totals, I mean, the way to separate is.
I always said whatever he would recommend.
It's two totally.
One or the other, that's.
Two totally separate issues is if you're concerned about liability, which I've said from the beginning, obviously that's what my job is. 99% of, obviously I care about the children in the community and don't want anything to happen to them. But from a liability standpoint, the insurance covers, covers that issue for sure. So if you're breaking it down and all you're worried about is liability, the insurance is a fine way to deal with it. If you're concerned about this, you know, the safe, whether or not you should be concerned about the safety of the children participating in activities on village property. If you are, then obviously, uh, it, it's like anything else, the liability insurance covers. If, once there was a problem, oh, at least we got something to take care of it. We don't have to worry about using our own, own funds or our own property. It doesn't keep something like that happen. Now, either there's background checks.
What would a legal counsel, what, what, what would you like to see? I mean, that's what.
I'm really, I'd be honest with you, I'm torn on it because, like I said, the liability is my game and so the insurance covers that. But again, as a parent and somebody that grew up playing down there in those parks and stuff like that, you know, I don't want to, and I don't think anybody here does. See one kid have something happen to. See one kid have something happen to him or somebody, you know, inappropriately touch him or abuse him or anything like that, and I'm sure nobody here does. And so it's kinda, you know, the lawyer in me says the liability insurance probably covers the village's risk.
Well, see, and I feel like it's our responsibility to protect the village. It's the league's responsibility to protect the kids.
I agree with that.
Yes, I am.
So, I mean, I guess we are doing what we can by requiring liability insurance. The league needs to step up at some point and protect our.
I agree with you there. And I think that's up to the parents who have kids participating to push the board to do that. That's not, I don't believe it's the village's responsibility to implement those scenarios, especially when you have a scenario like the softball association that's not playing on the village's property. But they don't.
But what if they.
So we got no control over them.
If they're playing on it.
They need a lease.
Yeah, they're going to, they're going to the park board, ask them at their next meeting to play on fields three, four, whatever.
But they would have to lease it, right? They would have to be.
So that we have to put a lease in place with them to do that.
Yep. So they'd have to have the insurance if that was the.
Any, any idea what it, like what a dollar insurance policy would cost?
About nine hundred bucks.
So nine hundred dollars for liability insurance for baseball alone?
Per policy.
And the softball would have one for ninety dollars.
Each organization would have to have a separate.
Or.
And it's not just sports, I mean.
So eighteen hundred dollars for both leagues or a hundred coaches at ten dollars each at a thousand dollars. It'd be cheaper for background checks for both leagues. They, they base it all, all their money comes from sponsors and fundraisers and donations. And it's gonna cost the leagues twice as much money to operate right off the get-go.
And they only need the background checks every three years.
Instead of, yeah. And then instead of having a hundred background checks done the very first year and ten the next year, it costs a hundred dollars total, you're gonna have another eighteen hundred dollars.
And I understand, I'm talking with an insurance agent who wants to sell insurance policies. However, when it was brought up that none of these organizations that utilize the park have liability insurance, they're just like, their jaw hits the floor. Like, are you kidding me? The exposure that's there is unbelievable. So almost every municipality, I, actually, I did not talk to a municipality that didn't have a requirement for liability insurance. We are probably one of the only in the area that don't require that.
I used to, like I said, I brought up this years ago and I'm not, we keep talking about this thing. They had a program last year, I think it went well. I mean, Corey, they had, they had it going, um, you know, they were trying to get coaches. They're wanting to open it up to farther out entities. I don't care where the kids come from, provide a safe, clean, good environment for them to play ball. They just wanna play ball and it's for the kids. Sure, you wanna make sure the coaches are in good standing and, and teach the kids the right way and morals and values and everything else. We can't control everything, but, you know, we're providing them a facility to play ball, providing them with some rules and regulations. And I'm sorry, rules and regulations, they gotta be a part of something or it'd be chaos. And like I said, the program they had last year, it went well. I didn't think we had a major problem with it. They played ball, they had a good time. I really don't see a problem with the background checks. I, I don't wanna hurt any individuals and, you know, specifically, but, you know, it's, it's laws and rules that we'd have to have in place. Again, with the liability insurance, Conrad Beck, when I talked to him two years ago about our, their different organizations that utilize the park, he thought they definitely need liability insurance. We're forcing that upon them now. Same thing as if we forced them to have a background check to make sure these coaches and, and assistants and whatever have that as part of their program. I still think it's a good idea. Like I said, I, I wanna make sure our kids are safe, but that's me.
And there certainly does need to be background issues checked and shoes aside, like Taylor mentioned, like with the lease or whatever, and I know we've had agreements with them before and we've talked about doing one more specific, but that lease needs to have term. I mean, we've had all kinds of crazy scenarios come up where the, you know, the park director's in charge of the fields and stuff and they say they're too wet to play and the league decides, no, we're gonna go out there and play on, whatever. Well, no, that's not the way it works. You know, that's part of the lease has gotta be, you know, the determination on whether or not the field's playable is, let's say, the park directors or whoever, you know, and, you know, whatever, I don't know what system they have. I know some places they have like a flag system where if there's a green flag up, you can play on it.
We have.
That we have.
Red flag.
Yeah, red flag, stay off, you know, or whatever. And, and that's the final say. And if you violate that, you violate the term of the lease and whatever the penalties are, but that's just one example. I mean, there, there definitely needs to be some rules and regulations from the village if for no other reason than to protect our property.
I like the background checks, but I do agree with what she said about village's responsibility as the liability partner and the league would be the one responsible for the coaches.
And that's the thing, and that's not to say, I mean, the, their, the liability insurance, whoever's providing that insurance may require that as a stipulation, but.
It could.
And I think we're, this conversation's obviously focused around the ball associations, but I.
It's everybody.
But, and that's the thing, I think there's events that happen at the pavilion. Brian, for instance, they've got a community room and they require a million dollar policy to, to utilize that. And it's, but it's, it's a three-day event and it costs ninety-five dollars. And that's a lot of places, a lot of event rentals. If, if it's a one-day thing, one-day party, you still have to provide some sort of policy.
Well, we get something for the day in the park, right?
Yes.
Any idea what that costs?
Yeah, it's no different than.
That's a large event, but.
Yeah, do you know what that? Didn't, didn't you say that six hundred?
Nine hundred dollars.
No.
It's either a one or a three million dollar for that.
Yeah.
Didn't you say six hundred?
That's the thing, most events, if you gotta, if you got some that's leasing the facility.
At the Catholic church, if you go to lease it or rent the facility, you have to have an insurance policy on it.
Yeah, you gotta have.
Well, here's the, here's the main thing that we need to, to do is we, we have beat this horse to death.
For three years.
Three or more years.
Well, the third horse.
And, and now, you know, they're, they're putting things together at the park. They're, they're trying to get teams together and, and they're, they're getting things rolling down there and we're still kicking that horse. We gotta get, we've gotta get together and, and as much as maybe I don't agree with Eric or Eric doesn't agree with me, we still have to do something and get it set and move on. And I just used you.
Oh, no.
Because I was looking at you.
No, I understand. I agree.
We gotta do something. And, and we gotta do it now. We can't, no, we'll talk about it and we'll come back next meeting. We gotta, we gotta do it now. We gotta get something done.
I make a motion that we move to require liability insurance with all with any organization that has a lease on, with the village to utilize their property.
And anybody that utilizes the property must have a lease.
Yes.
And if, so I'll second that.
Any other discussion before we do a roll call? Make sure, explain that again, sort of, please.
I make a motion that the village require anyone that uses village property to have a lease and that that lease, any stipulation of that lease is to require a one million dollar liability insurance policy. Say any organization. Any organization.
Okay, set.
Any organization or, I, once, I guess, to back up, the pavilion. So rentals at the pavilion, what's, what's the thoughts there?
If you're having graduations, you got weddings.
Family birthday parties.
You got a couple-hour rental, you gonna make them get liability insurance?
Stop renting it. They won't rent it.
Well, I mean, the Catholic church requires liability insurance to rent their facility.
Let's, let's let, let's let that pavilion set and just take care of everything else.
We'll talk about youth here, youth activity.
Up until now, we've never talked about the pavilion. So let's not, let's not bring a little cold meteor's gonna be beating it.
For any organizations such as Hicksville Girl Softball Association, Hicksville.
If there was a soccer association, if there was.
Anybody that wants to use our grounds.
Decided to start using something.
Whether it's for a one day or a.
Season.
Entire summer.
Yeah.
Okay, Cheryl?
Durations.
Cheryl's like, what in the world?
So, I guess.
They'd have her do it yearly or whatever.
So nothing's gonna be mentioned, let the baseball association, girls, they wanna do background checks, that's their responsibility. We're not gonna step in.
They can do whatever they want.
Extra. We will not mention background checks on anybody.
Okay, just wanna make sure. Okay, we have a first and a second, another discussion before we vote. Thanks, Tony, for your committee. Roll call.
Beverly.
Yes.
Marth.
Yes.
Martin.
No.
Bassett.
Yes.
Egling.
Yes.
Klepper.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for your committee. Got it, two ahead, thanks. Okay, next is police and fire and EMS committee met January the 20th. Minutes in the packet, if I wanna, that's yours, send the mic.
Well, like I said, we kinda did a, have a new committee with Tony and Charlie and wanted to meet with Scott and Chief and just kinda hear some of their goals, aspirations, some of their ideas for their department, personnel, equipment, all that kinda thing. We had a nice meeting with both of them, didn't last real long. They had another meeting after ours, but it was a start, kinda learned some things, like I've been with Charlie and Tony being part of that new committee, so.
I just have a quick question. Didn't, weren't we running into data storage issues that needed to be addressed like earlier than kinda long-term?
Yes, so.
Has that been resolved?
That part has been resolved with the NAS system that Bob purchased.
Okay.
The system that we have not finished yet is the download, wireless download for the in-card cameras.
Okay.
I'm still, Bob doesn't think we need to do the wireless download. We're gonna just stay, I think, as-is on the SD cards from the drive. But I didn't purchase that camera system for that purpose. So I was, I've been thinking about it and have it really excited. But I think I'm gonna go, just stick with my guns and then we go with the wireless downloads. The cars pull up, it dumps, okay? And then we don't have to worry about it. We're not messing with the SD cards. And he, why, why he was trying to say that he wanted to stick with that is because he doesn't know if the software for the in-card camera can separate the video that is not required compared to the video that is required. So, in other words, it would be dumping everything from that SD card and there may be video on there that we really don't even need and we're just gonna fill up the, the storage on that. And then we would have to buy a separate computer.
Not worse.
Just for that, so. But that was his thinking. So, like I said, I didn't purchase those cameras for the purpose of doing what we were doing the old way.
Marth, doesn't the sheriff's office have something where it does that automatic wireless dump when they?
I think the PD has it and as soon as they pull up in front.
Yeah, I think so.
They got like a router or something and it just, the Wi-Fi connects to the Wi-Fi and it just dumps. You know, and then that's what that computer will do. Everything goes to that computer. Then we go and pull from that computer what we need.
Right.
And then, you know, and then put it on the server, you know, so. As far as the NAS drive stuff goes, that is up and running. We moved the last two years to another drive, which cleared up a ton of space on the new server that we just got. So, and that's what we're probably gonna be doing here the next couple, two or three years is trying to do that. You know, maybe move two years at a time from that. So that NAS system's got a lot of storage capability.
Thank you.
So according to Bob, so.
Can you talk any better now?
Radios, no.
Radios?
No, we did, well, I can address it when.
Okay.
Give my speech writer.
Any other, see, we're on the police and fire, any other report? Is that it? Any questions for Mike? Okay, street, light and property committee, I think you reported the last meeting.
Yes.
Oh, so this is just the minutes, so. Administrators report. Your guys did a great job getting the snow.
Uh, recycle lot will be closed for the month of February. I was hoping to leave it open for two days a week, but we just weren't getting the, the traffic in and out. So it is gonna be shut down for this entire month. It'll open up to three days a week, starting March 3rd. The IFM contract, the original one they had sent over was something I wasn't willing to sign. They did submit another agreement that it's kind of like a, it's another year agreement. It is a little bit cheaper per month and it does allow us to leave the contract with a 30-day notice. So we'll be penalized for one month rather than for the remainder of the year once we do find somebody to run the sewer plant. Warren Slaughter did contact me to remind me that the bid for the widening of Musaargan, they're gonna wipe, be widening it four feet from Elm Street all the way north to 249. And it asked me about, it asked me about the mailboxes. This project is no cost to the village. The county's taking care of this. But the only thing that wasn't put into this contract or will be in the bid is the moving of the mailboxes. I had some concerns with the mailboxes. There is a, a few, there's a total of 29 mailboxes that's gonna have to be moved. So, yes, it goes from Elm Street up to Industrial Drive. There's 29 of them. I let Warren know that there is a handful of mailboxes that are in line with utility or telephone poles. He's not aware of any of those. So if we move the mailboxes, telephone poles are gonna be in the way. So that's something that needs to be addressed. We're not sure whether the, the contractor will move these mailboxes or if we, the village, will move it, move these mailboxes. He did inform me that if the contractor moves the mailboxes, the village will be billed for that. So I'm hoping that we can move them. I'm thinking we can move them for a little bit of nothing compared to having a contractor move 29 mailboxes. The water valve project, Pogomire will hopefully have that out to bid beginning of next month. I did inform them that the state will be coming through to do some repaving, resurfacing. So the valves at the corner of Arthur and High Street and Spenterville and High Street would have to be high on the priority list. We're hoping that by May 15th, those valves at those two intersections will. The contract obviously hasn't come to fruition yet. The fence up here next to the fire department, believe it or not, was hit during the snowstorm. Zachary's Construction, I notified them, they'll come out, take a look at it. A lot of the uprights are mangled and bent up. So I may wait until something, sometime closer to spring, once winter's over, to take care of that. Other than that, I just had in here that, that our, our village employees, they actually worked for 35 and a half hours straight during this last snowstorm. We kind of all split up and took shifts. That way we constantly had a skid loader going and two plow trucks at all time. Just wanted to thank everybody for their tireless work and dedication to getting everything cleaned out here in the village. That's all I got.
I got a question. First part of it was the Musaargan with the county coming in. Is there any way they can look at the intersection since that turn right there for the semis turning on to Musaargan off Elm? We've talked about that a while back. There's a major pole. They get whacked, there's, if there's cars, that's a busy intersection. And there's always a semi turning and there's cars backing up. And if they, if there's a car, they can't turn. There's no way. That is a tight, tight intersection. We're having this, which is a great project, don't get me wrong, but if they could figure out a way to, that intersection to get the semi turns a little bit better. I know, they're big, they're all in the, but they're all in the corners.
Mega bucks.
Right, they're big.
Well, they had to replace one the last time.
Yeah.
Earlier.
It's just a matter, they keep hitting them, they keep grinding the sides off of them. I mean, it is, it is tough. I know NIMCO has put rocks out there so that semis don't cut through their parking lot and go up into their property. I mean, that was just a thought. If Warren could even maybe take a look at that intersection, if that's something he can help, hey, whoever owns those power poles, you know.
There might be such a thing that he may have to move some poles on the project he's got on Musaargan. Corey. And if, and if he's gonna have to move any poles there, he could make it.
Scheduled.
Pole final.
Yeah.
That's a hell of a.
I was saying, if that could be looked at, I mean.
He said it's gonna take six months.
He's gotta do it.
Okay, anything else, Corey?
I would just make a recommendation. This is in regards to the, the lot, maybe just a little bit of heads up. I know there was some confusion on leaf pickup last time. If we're gonna do closings like that, maybe try and get a little. to do closings like that, maybe try and get a little bit of heads up before, like, obviously if the public's finding out the 7th, that is closed in February.
Other than.
Just a recommendation.
I mean, we did have, it's been on the webpage and stuff like that. Speaking of that, I had sent Troy something where I was looking into an alert system for the village, I think it's long overdue that we get something like the Nixle system.
Like technical messages?
Yeah, where we can start alerting residents for situations like that.
That's a really good idea, actually.
Water.
Snow emergency.
No, don't say that.
Snow emergency.
Sorry.
Snow emergency, stuff like that.
Summer festivals.
You've already got crisis, right?
Yes, correct, so.
Where, where would just, explain that.
The Nixle system? Right now is what the City of Defiance uses, so like anytime the city has, we'll say one of those.
An alert.
Things, yeah, an alert, snow emergency, anything, it doesn't have to be anything bad, they could be having a festival in a park or.
Major fire that's got intersections.
Where's it going to be broadcast at?
It's via cellphone.
Email, text.
Gotcha, 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 yeah, yeah.
What's the school?
It's only, we talked about, it's only for schools only.
Yeah, it can be, you know, it can be.
I'm with you now.
Text message.
Yep, yep, thank you. People sign up for it and there's no cost.
We have a fee that we pay.
Bob Fisher's the administrator.
Currently, currently, if we sound like a three-year contract, which we're not really sure after talking to Troy, not sure if we'll go with that company, but like in the three-year contract, it's $2,300 a year, that's up to 3,500 residents, so.
That's cheap.
They call cellphones along with landlines?
It can be set up and do that and photos and maps and.
We don't have a landline anymore.
There's all kinds of.
The school has that.
Yeah, what we talked about, but ours is only for schools only.
Yeah.
And the company we had before was only for schools only.
Like, the Sheriff's Department used to use the Nixle system and now they use a Hyper Reach, I think it is what it is.
Yes, Hyper Reach, which.
I get, I get Defiance and Balden County and the school, the, my wife, and, yeah.
I just think it's time the village has something for us.
You are right on.
Like, when the mayor.
Now, we have to call if we, they're able to do it for us, NAS is in with the Hyper Reach, but the problem is you got to call them down there and by the time they get there to send it out, or whoever's going to have to send it out, it's just a pain in the butt and then if they screw something up, maybe our, the communication between us isn't, you know.
I know it's like.
Misunderstood.
Like the City of Defiance, there's like a couple of people, I think, that have like administrator capabilities that can put the messages on.
Well, it's no different like the snow emergency, to get vehicles moved off.
Right.
If you didn't have Facebook, you didn't know there was a snow.
And that was the big thing.
So like when we had the two possible barricaded situations here.
Yep.
We, you know, shelter in place.
Yeah, those guys could have come down and helped you.
Yeah. So.
So I think you've got the blessings from the council, the way it sounds, unless there's somebody.
No, I think that makes sense.
Okay.
Look into that, Corey.
Anything else for Corey, any questions?
Yeah, the IFM contract though, we decided that doesn't have to go to bid or contract, we can.
We actually put it out for bid.
Yeah, and didn't get any?
Yep, January 24th was the opening bid, we had zero.
Right, I knew that, but how does it, when you're over the $50,000 threshold, I'm sure the contract still is, how does that work if you still can't keep putting the bid on it?
Well, besides that, have we gotten anywhere with highway waters? Nothing?
No, we had a meeting.
Yeah, we did have a personnel committee meeting this week, but.
You could do emergency.
We can see stuff.
We had a meeting, we had one application.
You've got to justify it. And obviously that's something that has to be done.
You have to suspend all the, everything, don't you?
Do you have a report?
On the emergency?
No, we just met tonight.
We just met tonight.
Right now, we're, we're just signing.
Go say I agree, we skipped over you, sorry.
It hasn't been.
So we talked about that.
A hundred years ago.
Hoping to find somebody and or another company coming in.
Okay, any other questions for Corey? We'll move along here. Solicitor's report.
What I got's ordinance 2022 dash 02, first reading by caption only, an ordinance amending pay ranges for the village employees and declaring an emergency since I see the effective date's March 1st. If you got any questions, Cheryl's.
I'll put them on your desk tonight because they didn't come over with the thread, I don't think, on your emails.
We didn't have the back page either.
Yeah, page two is missing, but anyway.
So the ones in red are the ones that are added or changed?
I move, you suspend the rule.
I'll second that. Roll call.
Klepper?
Yes.
Egley?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Beverly?
Second, third readings, ordinance 2022 dash 02 by caption only, an ordinance amending pay ranges for village employees and declaring an emergency.
Take a motion.
Got a second?
Seconds.
Roll call.
Beverly?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Egley?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
And along with what we talked about earlier today, I already have kind of a general form
of like, what I'll generically call a facility usage agreement or something, and I'll try and tweak that up and get it sent over to the committee and we'll look at and give us a starting point or whatever, so that, and that'll include the language about the liability insurance policy.
That'll be this week?
That might be.
I think, I would say.
Soon.
It should be soon.
I agree, yeah.
Yes.
So, would it be an ordinance or a resolution, Troy? We'd have to, we'd have to pass a resolution to enter into, I mean, like any other contract, enter in like a lease agreement with them or.
That way we can change it, resolution, you could change it, but I don't want any more changes, right?
So we would issue, basically we would issue a new lease that supersedes any prior agreement.
Right.
Okay.
And we wouldn't have to, every time somebody wanted to rent the park for it or whatever it is to the day, we wouldn't have to do a resolution every time, approve it that, because we've already approved the general format of lease agreement.
Can there, can there even be blanks where things are filled in?
Potentially, yeah.
Yeah, or where you, it's a one-day event or it's a two-week event or?
Okay, any other questions for Troy? Okay, moving on, oh, Police Chief, Department Hats.
All right, Officer Ziera Moran, well, her six-month probationary actually expires on the 11th of this month. She's on two days off now, I don't think anything can happen between now and then, but if it's possible, I'd like to go ahead and remove her from her six-month probationary period, she's done an outstanding job, I actually cut her loose probably about 30 days out of her FTO training, because she knows the job, it was just a matter of picking up, you know, the paperwork that we do here for the courts and stuff, she was already familiar with our database that we use, so she's done an excellent job. I'm going to ask for any better officer at this point in time. So, I don't know if it's possible if we can do that or if we have to wait till the next council meeting, that's fine, but.
I'll do a recommendation, take her off probation. Moran, how you, what's her last, how you spell it?
M-O-R-A-N.
Okay, last, that's her last name?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll recommend, take her off probation.
I'll make a motion, the mayor's recommendation.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Klepper?
Yes.
Egley?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
The second thing is the Marx radio system, we actually met, we had a 911 board meeting last week, we are making steps closer now to starting the process of getting a tower up here, so actually I have a meeting, 911 Board has a meeting Wednesday with Marx radios to, basically the company that's going to do the studies and all that good stuff, we've brought everyone aboard now and how we're going to pay for it, and then, so now we wait to get, we have to have Marx approvals on the sites that we chose, so once we meet with Marx and they approve everything, I think we're good to go, at least to start the process. I asked her specifically on a timeline, let's say you run in from, from like today, you start today and you have no issues, how long it would take to be built and up and running, she said probably about nine months. So, but, nothing ever goes that smooth, so I would say within a year's time, you know, I don't know how long the study will take, you know, they got to study all the birds and all that stuff and do the soil samples and hopefully, hopefully we don't find artifacts or.
Firestone?
Yeah.
What was it?
That was great news.
So, yeah.
Who would actually own the tower?
What's that?
Who would actually own the tower?
The county would own the tower.
So with, and this is a question, I was, we haven't talked about it in a while.
And then Marx would buy the tower back, is my understanding.
The new wa, with the new water tower going into place and the removal of this tower, there's, I think, Metaling and then, Metaling was really the only unknown, right? Because what's the Marx system?
What's Marx?
MediaCom.
Yes.
So, would they be open to MediaCom locating on that tower also?
That is a discussion that has not, that it's been asked about that and we don't.
MediaCom's already reached out to the Friends of the Library, they would like to just basically move it over onto Friends' property and then have an easement there.
Put a new tower in?
No, yes, I'm not exactly sure what the structure will look like. They're in conversation with them now, yes, I know, they said they needed a building and there was space back there that belonged to the library that they were looking into.
It's a little sliver of land between the, the library and the.
That would, yeah, the easement basically would be that, yeah, that sliver land, but then the actual section I think is kind of back behind there.
I think, I know they have a lot of terminations, obviously, right at that point, and I know that that was a concern a while back, but if we know that they might be open to it, it might be worth starting that conversation.
Yeah, I don't know if you can or you can't for sure, run out space or whatever.
Do you know, Jesse, how long do we have, basically to have an inoperable towers? Is there, I remember Kent talking about a timeline.
It's, excuse me, right now it's an assumed timeline because nothing's been put in black and white, but there's been, there's a lot of weight and pressure with the recommendation that within a year of building the new one, the old one has to be down.
And all the entities on there.
That was a stipulation of getting approved to build the new one, is the old one has to come down.
And all the entities on the current old water tower have been, were notified two years ago and said, you got this much time, this is what we're doing, be prepared, get ready.
So you're talking three years, probably.
Well, the date we actually gave them was our construction date, because as Chief just said, not everything goes according to plans as you lay them out, so we didn't want them to drag that into that entire potential year that we have to get it down. So we gave them our construction date.
I guess that would be a question, do you know when that goes out to bid?
It's supposed to be June 1st.
June 1st is when the tower goes out to bid? Okay.
When will the, when will the demolition go to bid? Or will, will it be an addendum to that bid?
No.
No.
Completely separate operation, separate contract, everything.
So we should go to bid on demolition about the same time because contractors are backed up, every guy I've talked to is, they're not even really working for, looking for any work this year.
I know, you're not telling me anything new.
That's tough to put a start date on that, though, if you're with the water tower and obviously material delay is everything.
And that's what we're actually anticipating, is the tower's going to take longer than you would naturally think it's going to, and we did not budget demolition this year, assuming the tower's not going to go up as fast as you would think.
Yeah, that's a tough.
We could kind of set our own date and then hope like the devil, they'll work with us, couldn't we?
We haven't ordered supplies in a while, not for a construction trade, I believe, sir.
They're way out.
We just got told the other day on our year contract something's 14 months out, so, yeah.
I got a friend of mine just ordered a new cat dozer and it'll be three years old when he gets it.
Can you send out notification to Metaling and MediaCom, just letting them know and then also letting, just give them an update on start dates for the new, new tower? Thank you.
Okay. Anything else for the chief? Anything else?
I think you all got the cases and call for service for the month, you guys got those, right?
No, this time, we did last, last time.
Last time we got it.
I've got them. You guys didn't get them?
No.
Packard?
No.
It was last month's.
Yeah, I didn't get them this time.
January's.
We got Mayor's Court, but I don't think you got January's.
I thought I sent them to you separate.
Yeah, they would have been sent to you separate. I guess she had sent the packet out before I got them sent to her.
We got them.
I can't give you the numbers, so.
Well, we'll see when we get them.
So she's got them, so.
It won't change.
All right, okay.
Scott, you're up.
I got an update on our new tanker, we did receive, we got the VIN for it, it's supposed to hit the assembly line the 11th, so it's slowly moving along. I have four names I'd like to get a recommendation from the mayor to put on the fire department. Rebecca Summers, Felix Salinas, Micah Grant, and Drew Wirt.
Those two are your?
No.
No, I thought maybe that was a couple of your firemen, okay.
Those are, they're on probation for all. Do any of them have, are any of them certified now to be firemen?
No, they'll have to go through class.
Okay, I'm going to recommend Rebecca Summers, Felix Salinas, Micah Grant, and Drew Wirt. They're going to do the drug and all that.
Depending on background and.
That's good news, four new firemen, so. Any EMTs? Drew's already an EMT, right?
Drew's already an EMT.
Okay, I'm going to recommend.
Put them on the fire department.
Father Mayor's recommendation.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Any discussion at all, questions? Okay, roll call.
Beverly?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Egley?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Thank you. I'd love to know that they can start the process.
Can they do, can they go out with you now?
Yes.
And, and.
Just basically.
Observe and.
Be gophers.
Yeah, gophers, right, 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 okay, yeah, that's great.
And the three will probably have the 36-hour class and Drew has requested to go ahead and just do the firefighter one class.
Wow, he's still certified EMT?
Yes, he's an advanced EMT for us. Would he need the background, drug screen, and physical or he's good to go? Okay. So Drew can start anytime.
Good job, Chief.
I think that's about all I have for right now.
That's awesome.
Okay, any other questions for the chief?
Thank you.
Thank you. Park director or anybody from the park?
I think we have a meeting Wednesday night, I believe.
Okay.
At 5:00. The park board, the park board, okay.
Cheryl, fiscal officer report.
You have your fund status as of today, the, it's stated like that because it goes[1741.16] The, um, it's stated like that because it goes by the la, the date of the checks that I wrote, which were for today. And you also have the January income tax, utility, and mayor's court reports, um, the revolving loan report, you have the fourth quarter MediaCom franchise fee report, and you have the five or six pages of, I hope everybody read it, even without the heading, because it's a lot of funding opportunities that are available for the Building Better America. Truly, I mean, guys, it's a lot of good stuff in there, so, just don't look at the first page.
Did we get a couple grants for two projects?
We've gotten three so far. The 1.3 million for the well field, the 354 for the water tower, and what was the other one?
359 for the ARPA and then, uh, we're still waiting for the small government, see if we get awarded that.
There's that one for 480,000.
And that would be for which project?
Water tower.
Water tower. Perfect.
We got, we got 35,000, another one for water wells.
You had talked, uh, a couple meetings ago about forming a committee or hiring a, an organization to, to start the search for a new building?
Yes, and Cheryl had handed me some information on municipal advisors. Um, as part of last year's budget, we did verify that our funds, um, in the grounds budget, um, that we can allocate towards some, either whether it's a municipal advisor or a separate architecture firm, um, for initial planning purposes. Um, it, it looks about the same whether we use a municipal advisor or a, uh, architecture firm. Um, I believe the process would look like us basically submitting an RFP or going out to bid essentially for, uh, planning services.
In, in those planning services, are they going to help us find a proper place?
So, obviously, the place is determined by how big the building is and what services, so, um, I've not talked to any municipal planners personally or municipal advisors myself, I've talked with a couple of architecture firms. What that looks like is going around, sitting down with each department, discover, basically doing a needs discovery, figuring out, you know, do we as a village want every department under one roof, or does the, you know, fire department still keep their fire hall and everybody else is under the roof, or, so, it's all part of that conversation. And then, obviously, based on how big the building's gonna be, the square foot needed, then they'll also help with site selection.
Do you, through, through any of that scouting you've done, have you come close to any, I mean, I'm not gonna hold you to anything, but any type of a figure on it?
Anywhere from 30 to 50,000 dollars typically covers that initial planning process. It all depends on how intense it is.
How many times we make them do it over.
But, that money is there in the budget to cover up to around 50 grand.
Hopefully 25.
Hopefully 25.
I would really love to see us move on that. Uh, I don't know what committee or what's gonna do it, but I've wanted that since I've been here and that's been a long time.
I think it makes a lot of sense. I don't know if we need mayor's recommendation to form a committee or what kind of what that looks like, especially committee.
Well, we have a committee of street enlightened property. Don't think we need another committee.
Who's, who owns Street Light?
You're the chair, right?
That's the old one.
Oh, Larry.
Me, you, you...
Me.
Eric.
I'd say, I don't think I'm on Street Light.
Eric, Eric, Tony and I. Uh, we wanna drag you along somehow.
See, I'm not on the committee, but I'd be more than willing to participate.
Yeah, okay.
It'd all be in on it. It'd all be in on it anyway, all the whole council.
As we bring everything back, yes, there'd be a lot of approvals to, to be sought. But just to get, just to get things stimulated and rolling.
He could be at the meeting, just can't talk. If that's possible.
I mean, not that you wouldn't talk.
I don't think that's gonna work.
Say that again. You can't talk.
You could be at the committee, but you just can't talk. Just listen.
Unless, unless they are recognized by the chair.
Right.
I'm a concerned citizen at that point.
You are, you are. Gotta get guys.
Okay.
I got one more thing I forgot.
Oh.
So, uh, we did receive our bulletproof vests last Wednesday. So, uh, she's got the invoices for those. I think those have to be paid first and then submitted to the state of Ohio, uh, to workers' comp, and then they will reimburse us.
Take Bob out in country and try one of them.
They got me in Congress, can't lose.
Yeah. Okay. Cheryl?
March conference, the only one who's signed up is the mayor and Tony. Guys, if anybody wants to go, they're the three that are at March and they're in different places, Cleveland, Columbus, I forgot the other one.
I was gonna ask about that. Can, we go as a group, if we're going to the same place, can council ride together?
I don't care.
Say, well, I'm just saying, we can't meet together, three or more. You ride in a car to a conference.
Discuss public business together.
That's right. You know.
Dump trash all the way down there. Can't talk business.
Did you guys choose the same, the same event?
I don't know.
The same conference?
It's only one, it's for new officials, but it's for anybody.
But it's just the, so it's all, all in Columbus?
No, there's one in Cincinnati.
Columbus and over by Cleveland, they're all three hours.
Yeah, Cleveland's, yeah.
You guys are both going to the Columbus one?
There, it's the same agenda for all three. They're just on three different days, three different places, and they're all on Saturdays.
Any of that online?
No.
Okay.
On, on those ones that you sent the other day via email, uh, all of those are credited for us to, for what we have to take, all our online stuff?
No, because they're, you have to do water.
Well, that's the water, so that's the R cap.
Water's mandatory. It's not mandatory, but if, if you don't take it, um, not all of you, but at least for, uh, some percentage, we don't get any grants.
I think all the new ones should have to take it.
I was gonna bring it up when you opened it to the floor. So, those who are new and don't know, to keep us qualified for the really good grants on water sewer infrastructure, uh, 50% of our elected officials have to take three, I think it's three of these required. Cheryl has the list, if you don't have it anymore, I'll send it to you again. Um, she can send it out to you. Online courses, login, it's your name, you're with the village, Hixville, whatever.
You checked it before.
But with seven of you elected, right, six, seven?
Six. Let's count the mayor.
The mayor is elected official.
Six plus the mayor, seven.
So that puts us to four people have to do it to keep up every year.
Do it online, right?
Huh? It's online.
Eight hours.
Right, very, it's just time consuming, because you gotta have it playing the whole time, but you gotta log in with the village of Hixville and we're barely, we're, we're skirting the line here the last couple of years. We've still been getting our grants and I'm happy about that, but I was gonna bring it up later, I really...
That's that, uh, R cap stuff?
R cap offers the easiest, in my opinion, to access.
Those are the ones I took before. Will you email it to me?
But you gotta do it every year.
Yeah, will you either email it to me, I'll do it.
Or you can go to R cap.
R cap, yeah, you go to the website, pulls it right, all that.
I don't wanna do anything that makes me work. I'm retired.
Anything else for Cheryl? Any questions?
Thank you, Cheryl.
Yes, exactly.
It's a long meeting. You got enough tapes back there, Bill?
Yeah, we're doing good.
Okay. I need a volunteer from the council to be on the Hicks TV. We always have one councilman, same buddy.
That Mark boy does good.
I've been, I've been on for years, somebody new. You, have you been on that one?
Yeah, I have, yep.
Yeah, you have.
So, I'd like a volunteer, or I will call somebody.
Or a designated.
I'd be trouble.
Tony?
I was just thinking.
Charlie?
I don't watch TV.
You don't need to. You don't need to.
But it's an important position, a representative from the council, so they kind of know what's going on, so.
Eric would fit good, because it's at the school anyhow.
Yeah, but what days do they meet? Do they meet like Saturday or Sunday mornings?
I'd ruin your church, wouldn't it?
No, I got a lot of bus trips and everything else.
Sports?
Saturday's a workday for me. I'm not... Charlie don't watch TV, so, Tony?
That'd be a very good, unbiased opinion. A non-TV watcher.
A non-TV watcher would have fresh ideas.
Yeah. I thought last time you asked for somebody to volunteer for something, the fire thing, I did that, so.
He did.
I'm good. Still, I just still don't know what I'm supposed to do, but...
It appears nobody's really, really interested.
And then, when I say, can I have money for this, say yes.
Can that be online also?
It was here two years ago, it was all online.
Then I'll be there.
I think we're already elected.
Okay, I'll work on it and I'll be calling somebody.
I guess who has Hicks TV at home?
MediaCom.
MediaCom?
Well, you can see Hicks TV on Facebook and on YouTube, but, uh, MediaCom is our main, NSMTA, both have that channel, so, uh, we encourage our board, some of our board don't have either SMTA or MediaCom, uh, so we encourage board members to, if they can, get it or watch it, you know, see what they're helping govern and make decisions on, and Bill's managing skills and his outreach to the community and some of those programs. So, I've been on a long time, I thought it was maybe time for somebody new, uh, young, young people in this council, not me, but, uh, young people over there.
Yeah, I don't wanna say they're tough, but I haven't even had electricity for two months.
It's a good board, Steve, Steve Irs is on it and, um...
You meet once a month?
You meet once a month. Uh, it doesn't involve any taxpayer money. The Hicks TV funding is totally taxpayer money free, it's all the franchise fees and whatever money we raise from underwriting and donations, so you don't have to worry about any kind of taxpayer issues of spending money, taxpayers' money, so we're completely, we're self-reliant and, uh, we got a good group of people, we have representatives from the school, library system, faith community, the public at large. Uh, Cheryl is our financial officer, but we do, in, in our bylaws, we do have to have one, one council person as, as support.
Okay. Think about it, feel, call me.
Once a month? Once a month?
Okay, mayor's report.
I've got a bunch.
Sorry. On the proclamation, I'm just gonna read the end. Uh, now therefore, I Ronald Jones, mayor of the village of Hicksville, do hereby proclaim February 1st of the 28, 2022 as Career and Technical Education Month. I'm not gonna read the whole thing, so. Um, city in review, I think all of you got a copy, so you had a chance to read it, so...
Well written, sir.
Um, city review of 2021. I have been in office for two years and except for two months, we have been dealing with the coronavirus. It has been challenging for each one of us, but I continue to be proud of the citizens of our community and the employees. Our employees have worked hard, even in the challenging situations, and our community has been patient, kind, and generous to the fellow citizens who have struggled. We all battled the closure of West High Street, everybody remembers that, Chicago Avenue and Arthur Street, that caused detours, inconveniences and loss of revenue for some businesses, and I apologize for that. These improvements will help with the flooding and the EPA mandated long-term control plan. The, on the plus side is all the state routes are scheduled to be repaid this spring, so. There are several challenges facing our community. Available housing is an ongoing issue. The village sold 20 acres at a public auction in September. The selling price was 10,000 per acre. This housing addition will be on LaBarre Drive, located off Casper Miller Road. Also, we are in critical need of EMTs and firemen. We just got four today, that's great. Um, we only have four full-time EMTs, which makes covering all the hours very difficult. A special thanks go for these EMTs who are working many hours and weekends. We are short 12 firemen, so we're only short eight now, right? If you are interested, please contact the village office and we will get you connected to the right people. We are also looking at county-wide program as a possible solution down the road. Chief Danning mentioned this, all of our emergency services use a system called the Marx Radio System. The repeaters sometimes drop off while being used in our area, which can be a critical issue. We've talked about that, very critical. A solution is a new tower, you mentioned that tonight, but the total cost could be close to a million dollars. The 911 center, which is tax-supported, and the county commissioners are working to try to resolve this issue. We need people to be involved in city government, we need you to volunteer on committees and projects. We need people to be willing to put their name in to run for council seats. This year, there were four open council seats, only four gathered signatures to be put on the ballot, and one person was a write-in. I have been looking into possibility changing our council seats to a nonpartisan. This means you would not run affiliated with a political party. We are the only village in the city and in the county that candidates run from a Pacific, Pacific party. This would also save the village money because we would have, would not have to pay the 12,000 fee for a primary if council seats are the only issue. Kent Miller retired this year as village administrator. We thank him for his leadership and service. He is remaining as a part-time employee to help where needed and continue to write grants for the village. Corey Wan was hired as our new administrator. He had been serving on the council, so Charlie Martin was appointed to fill his seat. Charlie Martin and Tony Egley were elected new council members. Ron Beverly starting his sixth term, four-year term, Mike Barth for, four-year term. Thanks and congratulations, everybody. Our village received over 337,000 dollars in CARES money. We have used this money to supplement our budget to pay over 100,000 of the police and EMT payroll. The purchase of two police cruisers totaling 100,000 dollars and 12,000 for laptop computers. This money got us through the past year, or we probably wouldn't have made it, I mean, we, this, it'd have been terrible. The total budget for the year 2022 is 10.6 million dollars. Our village really is thriving with many activities led by volunteers in the community. The Christmas cruise through brings thousands of people to our village and adds excitement and wonder for so many. A huge thanks to their leadership and all the volunteers that work year-round planning and preparing. The beautification committee continues to make many areas of our village look stunning. The farmer's market at the corner of South Main and North Main and Smith Streets, which is led by Kelsey Klepper. The Hicksville Summer Concert Series had five concerts outside of Huber. These were sponsored by the Hicksville Bank, SMTA, and Klepper Building, and thanks to those sponsors. And we're getting ready to meet this week, the plan. Defiance County Fair, where many of our young citizens present their projects and many of our community groups have fundraisers or service projects. Congratulations to the St. Michael's Catholic Church celebrating their 100th anniversary. Exciting things for our village. The park board chaired by Lindsey Theo has started a walking trail committee. Phase one is a planned trail within the park area. Phase two is hoped to be a wooded trail outside the present park area. The village is working with the school on another safe route, route to school grant. Van Cress Nursing Home is preparing to build a new facility. They plan to maintain their 31 current employees and add 15 new jobs. East Smith Street had two blocks that got new curbing and paving. Uh, we needed a new well field, which cost about 1.3 million. We have already received grants to pay for, uh, for 480,000. The new well will be behind Haver and LaBarre Drives. Mark Young from Two Bandits says October Fest is a go for this fall, just talked to him about a month ago. The Chamber provided new banners in the downtown area. People are using the CRA, Community Investment Area, to make property improvements and receive a 75% tax exemption for seven years, and this is citywide. I think last count, about 16 people have, uh, taken that reinvestment of CRA. At the industrial park, we are getting closer to constructing, constructing a spec building. New companies are looking for existing buildings that are ready to move into. Our village income tax was up 17% last year. The village has a revolving loan fund that they can loan to businesses. 624,000 is still available to help businesses in our community, and I think it's roughly 1.2 million that we have loaned out. You can now watch Hicks TV on SMTA Channel 8. Local churches, churches and citizens came together to start a program called Growing God's Way. Hicksville was one of three communities in the state of Ohio to receive the downtown grant revitalization. Three local businesses benefit from this program. Future projects that have to be done are the Defiance Avenue Lift Station, a new water tower, and the water and sewer lines out... tower, and the water and sewer lines out Industrial Drive to run the Route State 49. An interesting find was made this year when a new doors were installed at City Hall, the time capsule that was put behind the dedication plaque in 1965 was found. The all-copper box was put back behind the plaque. Okay, the city has started, we talked about this tonight, started a study about replacing the current City Hall building that was built 67 years ago. In closing, I am proud to serve along many dedicated citizens in this community. The spirit of volunteerism, generosity, and small-town values make Hicksville an exceptional place to live and work. We're in this together, Mayor Ron Jones. So any questions? Anything else needs to be brought before this council?
Make a motion to adjourn?
A second.
Roll call.
Are you sure about 67 years?
Egley?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.